I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Now, we will open it up for public comments. I know we have some here for the... Some are here for the public hearing. I want to make sure I... Okay, first, Terri Spee.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a volunteer and a foster at the Hamilton County Animal Shelter. I understand that you toured the shelter recently, both locations, so you've become aware of the challenges that Cincinnati Animal Care is up against while trying to perform their life-saving mission. We hear that the county will have a new shelter built at some point in the future, but we understand it's years away. The county shelter takes in approximately eleven dogs every day, and over ninety-one percent of those dogs go on to find their forever home. But when the emphasis shifts from euthanizing to life-saving, like it did when Cincinnati Animal Care took over, needs change as well. It takes space to save lives. The Corrane Building is over sixty years old and is way too small to house all the stray, abandoned, and discarded dogs that come into the shelter. Opening the Dane facility last spring relieved some of the burden, however, because the Dane location is a warehouse. With freestanding wire pens and a concrete floor, it's impossible to keep clean. Because there are no drains, a dog must stand in their own waste for up to twenty-three hours a day. It's damaging to their paws and creates a perfect environment for the transmission of disease. Cleaning dog dishes is performed with cold water supplied through a garden hose. There's no sink, no hot water, and only a central floor drain. Cincinnati Animal Care staff and volunteers endure these working conditions because they love animals and because there's a need. So, we're here to ask you today to prioritize and fund necessary updates to the Dane location to make it safer for staff, volunteers, and animals. And we're asking that you prioritize the acquisition of land and build a shelter that can save even more lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Kathy Strack.
Hello. Thank you for giving us this time to speak. My name is Kathy Strack. And Terri and I and Barb represent some of the dozens, if not hundreds, of volunteers and fosters at the Hamilton County Animal Shelter. So, we volunteer through our efforts by washing dishes, cleaning kennels, doing loads of laundry, walking the dogs so they can get out and get a little bit of fresh air, even in this weather. Entertaining the cats, because they don't go for walks. Supporting the workers day in and day out at the shelter in both locations. Some of our ongoing issues that we would like to remain in the forefront and for you to stay aware of is the first, the need for hot water at the location. If you could imagine just for a moment not having any hot water in your home, how difficult that is to get things clean. We have safety issues such as better outdoor lighting and rodent control. That's all I'll say about that one. So, thank you for your support. We're just here to keep the dialogue going, keep awareness levels high. Because at the end of the day, it's about caring for these animals that rely on us daily. So, thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn McQueen.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm coming because I'm a senior citizen. I am eighty-one. And that bill, the seven seventy-seven, has not passed yet. And my property taxes went up. Seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred, two, seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. That's a hundred percent increase. And they said on the paper that I saw from the Hamilton County, it would be ten percent increase. I might be mistaken. I don't have it with me now. But I don't understand how I could go from paying... I haven't done anything to my house and haven't approved. I live there. Raised my kids there. My husband passed there. All of our lives have been there. And I love living in Avondale. I don't want to move, but the things that are going on, it seems like it's unbelievable. And then people are trying to force me out because there's no reason why. My taxes should have went from three thousand, three hundred to seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. You know, and it's really a shame that bill has not passed, that people over seventy would be exempt from taxes. There are a lot of states that do it. I don't know why. We can't do it. Why Cincinnati puts every burden, every burden on the taxpayers. I worked fifty years. I should not have to now be dealing with things that should have been resolved a long time ago. The fifty-five dollars, five hundred and fifty-five dollars I got from Homestead, not even a jet, in my taxes. So, I mean, so it's coming down to where I have to make a choice to move out of Avondale, sell my home, and I don't think it's right. And that's all I want to say. It's just a shame that there is no concern for senior citizens. Everything goes to soccer and football. Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't want you to move either. Jody Freeman.
Good afternoon and respect to the board. Thank you for your service. Well done, Commissioner Stephanie Summer O'Dumas. Thanks for always thinking of our counties' families and people and animals when appropriate in need first. You promised to be a voice for those who feel they have no voice. Well, you've done that. Your thoughtful and selfless acts and program initiatives have enhanced the lives of many in Hamilton County. Your community programs make a difference, and we will see the fruits of your labor for years to come through the people. Thank you for your integrity in keeping your promise to consider and serve all residents, whether they voted for you or not. Your legacy is strong because of who you are and what you represent. Professional, strong, mature leadership. I respect that you're clinically trained and spiritually equipped to recognize mental and spiritual deficiencies. So, when you give testimony of your experiences and observations, I totally believe it. It's unfortunate that everyone's passions and talents are not celebrated and have been held hostage or misrepresented. So, I'm saying to you, Commissioner Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, great job, well done. And others feel the same, but can't or don't say it for fear of retaliation. Thanks for speaking out for that group as well. You are well-respected by decent people. Keep up the great work. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you for always doing the right thing. God will get the glory and press forward. Thank you.
Kail Howard, you're gonna wait on the public hearing, right? I'm sure. We'll hold that one. We have another one. Okay. Carmen Thomas. The other floor for two minutes. Then the rest, I guess, are for the hearing.
Yes, I just wanted to speak on some of the things that I wanted to address. I wanted to commend for some of the things that you have brought forth to the community. Some of the initiatives that you've brought forth. Being a realist, first and foremost, thank you for the actions that you have put in place for the realists. With the port, that was a great initiative, bringing us to the table. Thank you for that. And to the other commissioners, thank you. That has been a great partnership. As to your leadership skills, wanted to address that. I have seen your leadership in the past, and I want to commend you on your leadership skills. You have shown exemplary skills in your leadership. You have brought forth the county with your leadership. You have brought us tremendously from where we have not been. We have not gotten to a point where we are now if it had not been for your leadership skills. Thank you for the transparency that you have given the people of the county for opening up the books, showing us things that we haven't seen. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Herschel Daniels, is that for the hearing or in general, on Zoom? Okay. Herschel Daniels, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Herschel Daniels, Jr. I'm an honorably discharged disabled vet, military veteran, who's a member of the Martin Luther King Coalition of Cincinnati. Who is also the chairman of the Cincinnati Empowerment Corporation, doing business as Friends of the African Union Global Operations Center, which was created to cover people covered by the Conference of Berlin, which was signed into law by the United States in nineteen thirty, making it American law. And two, members of the African Union, along with their people, and three, the three hundred million people of the African descent in the global African diaspora, including those in Hamilton County. Now, on August second, twenty twenty-one, the United Nations...
Hello?
Created a permanent... Yes, I'm sorry. Created a permanent form on people of Africa descent. We're bringing that home by creating a United Nations Association chapter here in Cincinnati. And on Tuesday, at the Cincinnati Foundation, we released a statement to that effect on that day of national racial healing. In my book, The Black Folks Plan for a Just Economy, we have a plan of action to leverage the eighty-eight billion dollar PNC Community Benefit Agreement, while leveraging the funds from the sale of the railroad from Cincinnati of one point six billion dollars as infrastructure improvement for funding a roof on Paycor Stadium for use by youth, seniors, veterans, and the community as a whole. That this could be accomplished, okay, as a public-private partnership, leveraging Executive Order, Presidential Executive Order fourteen zero eight nine and thirteen nine eight five, as well as the president's move last year.
I'm sorry, your time, your time is up. We only have two minutes, but if you'd like to send something in writing to the clerk, we can have that information.
It will be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are at one sixteen. So, I would like to go into the public hearing, because I know we have a lot of people here for the public hearing. So, I make a motion to go, and we'll come back to our comments after the public hearing. I make a motion to go into the public hearing.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Do I have to say both items? Or how should I? Mr. Prosecutor, was that okay, just to go into public hearing, or did I have to identify which one? Okay. All right. So, okay, so we have to do them one at a time. So, I make a motion to go into public hearing on the sidewalk repair replacement program.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is the first of two here, public hearings for the twenty twenty-four sidewalk replacement program. The engineer's office does an annual inspection of one-sixth of all the sidewalks along county roads within the unincorporated areas. We establish which ones have tripping hazards or are broken and need to be replaced. We send out letters. We sent out two sets of letters to all the adjoining property owners where there's deficiencies. We will... They also got a letter, a third contact with the dates for the public hearings. The purpose of this meeting is to allow us to move forward with potentially assessing any unpaid bills that is done, that is remaining after the contract to the property owner so they can be assessed on their property taxes. And this is an opportunity for the public to speak if they have any concerns with the assessment process. The second hearing will be held, and they will also have the opportunity to speak about the quantities and the actual costs associated with the work.
Okay. I will open it up. Is there anyone here to speak on the sidewalk repair replacement program that has not filled out a court? All right. I'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse, anything on this?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas, anything?
Yes, I have... Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good. If you could just indicate what areas we're talking about.
Sure. I'm sorry. I should have done that. These are in Delhi Township and Green Township this year.
And it's clear that we, this will not be the final one, that we'll add on other sidewalk replacements later on.
That is correct. We do this annually. We do, I believe it's one-sixth per year, correct? Yes, every six... Yes, every six, so it's a six-year rotation. And so that we cover the entire county. And um the property owners are given the opportunity to do the repairs themselves, get a permit and do the repairs themselves, hire a contractor to do the repairs. If they are not done, then those areas that still haven't been done are included in our contract.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next hearing is what date again?
Um, I'm not, I don't have that, I'm sorry.
Okay. We'll get that to them. I make a motion to come out of a public hearing on the sidewalk repair replacement program.
Second.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse, Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get that date. I make a motion to go into public hearing uh regarding the amendment up to the home ARP allocation plan for non-congregant shelter.
Second.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, my name is Maria Collins. I'm, am the Community Development Administrator uh in the Planning and Development Department. And uh we're here today to fulfill a HUD requirement to seek public comments for the amendment or the substantial amendment of the county's home ARP allocation plan to include non-congregate shelters, preferences, and limitations as advertised in the County Court Index, the Herald, and the Community Development webpage. So with that, I would ask Commissioners to open the floor for comments, please.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do have a speaker, Raquel Howard Smith, CEO of YWCA.
Hello and good afternoon Commissioners. Um, I want to thank the county administrators and commissioners for considering the amendment that prioritizes emergency shelter uh for families fleeing domestic violence and dating violence in the county. Um, uh, of course, I am here as uh the president and CEO of YWCA uh because we are in support of this amendment. Um, YWCA operates the only emergency shelter for families fleeing violence, domestic violence in our county, and has so since nineteen seventy-eight. It was the seventh shelter of its kind in the country. Uh, we've been doing this work for um uh over fifty years, supporting survivors here in Hamilton County. Our current shelter um has been operating since the late nineties. It is a congregate shelter and as we all saw during COVID, um, that is uh not how families, especially those who have experienced trauma, should live. And we can't keep them safe from disease um in, in the pandemic. So during the pandemic, uh, YWCA put forth a substantial um investment of, of our generous donor funds um to purchase a building so that we can renovate it into a non-congregate shelter. Um, just a couple of stats. We serve families, forty-seven percent of the residents of our shelters are children. Um, and this project will permit us to nearly double our nightly capacity. Uh, we've purchased the building, created the plans, have dozens of partners to the table. Um, it will be a twenty-one unit um uh shelter with separate bathrooms, kitchenettes, accommodations for um people that are living with disabilities. And all of our supportive services will be housed in the same location. Um, this project is ready to go. Um, often the families come to us with nothing and we need to be able to provide all the support we can in this building. Um, YWCA and our generous donors have uh contributed at least three minute, uh, three million to this project. We're asking the county for less than uh five percent uh of this total project.
Thank you. While you're there, uh, there are no other speakers. Is there any other speaker who would like to speak who haven't filled out a card for this topic? With that, I'm, I'm gonna open it up if we have questions. I think would be a good time to ask. Um, first of all, thank you and uh thank you for your work. Thank you for the work of the YWCA. Um, I want to thank, thank you because you invited uh me out, I'm sure, all the other commissioners, but uh we can't go together. But I know I came out and got a chance to see the facility you're in now and how it's crammed for families uh who fighting against domestic violence. And then I got a chance, Alex Coons, your, uh, on your staff, took me and uh your team to see what you're building uh in Avondale. One, you're gonna stay in the Avondale area, which I think is great. And I think what you're putting forward is groundbreaking. Um, and something that we don't have where a family, because a, a lot of people you said won't stay because they're like, wait a minute, I'm leaving my house and now I gotta be in places with people I don't know. Uh, but this gives them kind of the privacy and also helps the children to have some kind of normacy. And then I saw the different kitchens and those kind of things is really, really, really good. And um I was really excited and I said, well, what can we, can we do something? And um wanted to have something, all of us have to put in our, our budget priorities. And this was one of, that I had put in, I said, we should do it. But we were trying to do it where it doesn't come out of the general fund. I think this is something that uh is needed, something's groundbreaking, something we don't have. Um, and I'm in full support uh of it. Uh, so I just wanted to, to say that. But I'm glad that you're here if they have questions. Uh, you all were able to answer a lot of my questions on the tour. But I will open it up to Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I too had the opportunity to go on the tour. Um, a big fan of the services that the Y has brought to this community for, as you say, many decades. Um, it's imperative that we have the YW doing the work. So I, 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 we were involved in the budget conversations and trying to get a better, better understanding about uh the capital needs for the YW and the operating needs for the YW and trying to fit all these things together from different funding buckets. And so in the general fund, um, through the budget process, we did allocate some dollars that went, will be distributed through JFS through a competitive process related to similar work, um, related to domestic violence and the impact on kids primarily. And so I just want to make sure that you're familiar with that opportunity that will be coming out as well. So this is different because it's capital. And I, and during the budget process, we were struggling with how to um try to address this need, but outside the general fund. And so I, I do want to commend staff for looking uh to some of the grants that run through the Planning and Development Department to get creative uh with the government's allowance, by the way. We weren't sure if this could fit within the federal guidelines. Come to find out it does and it's a, you're a sole source provider. So I had some questions at the last hearing about that piece about the sole source part. Um, but Maria Collins um elaborated on that and said that it was sole source. So I too am supportive. Uh, happy to vote for the amendment to make sure that you all can. What, what is the date for it to open up?
Well, we certainly hope that it's by the end of twenty-four. Um, we are resuming construction um based on our timeline now in February.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioner O'Dumas? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. No questions directly for you, but um I know a lot about uh domestic violence shelters, having been a survivor of domestic violence. Um, but I will say to be transparent to those uh that are watching that this is not, there is not going to be a RFP that's going out, but you can apply directly on our website if you are, for some reason, providing domestic violence services and you have an entity that is doing that and we don't know about you. Uh, we want to diversify our funding. And so if you have um services you've been providing, you've been a little quiet about it, because I know for sure, like Bethany House does it also, uh, just put in your application and let us know because we want to be transparent and give everyone an opportunity. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, Maria, would um, before we close, where would we go from this point? Is this a resolution put together for the calendar?
Yes. So after this meeting, uh, at your next meeting, uh, thir- next Thursday, uh, January the twenty-fifth, uh, I will come back to request your authorization or approval of the resolution for the substantial amendment. And then um we'll go in, up, upload that information to HUD and we should be ready to go.
Awesome. So next week, we'll be looking for it. Uh, I make a motion to come out of public hearing uh regarding the amendment to the home ARP.
Second.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, now we opened it up for comments and motions. Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. I'm, I know we've got a large crowd in here for other agenda items, so I'm gonna keep my comments short. Just want to thank all the organizations throughout the county that celebrated Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Um, we in this community love to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. And I was proud to participate in a number of those celebrations. But I really do think it uh speaks to the um, the, the spirit in this community when it comes to celebrating something important. A lot of people had the day off. Uh, some people uh didn't use that day to celebrate, but many people did. And the organizations that brought all of us together, I just do want to compliment that, whether it was the Freedom Center or St. Xavier Church or the Quinn Chapel AME, many, many organizations did that. So I, I want to say thank you to them. I, on behalf of the commission, participated in a news conference that was held by Arts Wave in the Chamber of Commerce to talk about the impact of the arts to our economy here in Hamilton County. Um, they did a survey and the number for the impact over the last couple of years has been one point six billion dollars, uh, which is, I think, very significant. And I think many of us understand the impact of the arts and how we think about ourselves and how others, uh, why they come into our community uh because of some of the offerings we have related to arts. But to have that kind of economic impact, I think, is outstanding. And I think it reminds us of the um, the impact of the arts. And I got to relay some of what the county investments have been uh through our ARBA dollars related to the arts community. I'm just gonna kee- I have other things, but I think I'm gonna stop there and, and, and allow the commission to move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Dumas?
Thank you. I have a few things since it is our first month of meeting. Um, but I'd like to um thank all of those who have been putting in, applying for boards and commissions vacancies. We really need you. We need the um community to give input on what we're doing. So I'd certainly want to thank them. We're getting almost, we're almost filling our vacancies. Um, and also I wanted um everyone to know my priorities remain the same, basically for twenty twenty-four youth. Youth um is top on my list uh as a priority. Youth programs and initiatives and employment uh is very close to my heart. So I will be working really hard uh with the Beyond Your Imagination, with the Inspire Initiative uh to continue that. And also we have a gentleman who's coming in, uh, would like to come in this month to talk about, he's a recipient of the Inspire Grant, which gives you five thousand dollars to, as a grassroots uh group, uh, to do some things you haven't been able to do. So he will be coming in uh this month. And also I wanted to bring up about um the warming centers. I was really concerned this weekend, as cold as it was, I was sitting, you know, in my warm house. And I'm looking, uh, as I drove past, I saw people, um, not a lot that were homeless and also saw on the news about warming centers. So I immediately called two-one-one, United Way, to say, where are these centers? Uh, I knew of some of them, but not all of them. So it seems sufficient for the downtown area that we have enough. I'm gonna ask Chris Schaefer, who is in charge of the First Suburbs, um, and ask him if he could maybe get a list from Wyoming, from Forest Park, from Glendale, whatever. Do they have, what is their plan for those that are out in Nicole? It's not just out in Nicole downtown. So I would like to get a list from Chris. And I don't know, uh, Mr. Administrator, if you can let him know that or, that would be great. Okay. That would be great. And of course, affordable housing continues to be a priority uh for me and for this board. Uh, we just want, I want to see more coming up, um, more being built, renovated and all those things. So affordable housing is certainly uh top on my list. And lastly, I will say reentry. Um, we talk a lot about helping those who have made some mistakes to be able to be employed. And I initiated um RISE, which is reentry into society and employment. And we can say that, but are we doing that? And as I said, I think our last meeting, I asked um Trina Jackson about how many um ex-reentry citizens, I'll call them, not ex anything, um, how many have we employed in Hamilton County? Because we have many, many jobs available and the answer was zero. So she's working right now with our Human Resource Director to look at what um jobs are o- open, what jobs they have the skills for. I'm asking Trina, if you can kind of match your clients with the openings and see where we can fill some of those positions. I would love to, if we can just say we have hired one this month or next month, um, it would be great. So I'm, I'm looking into that issue. Um, let's see. Um, oh, it was one other thing I wanted to direct attention to. Oh, item nine on our consent agenda item is about animal care. And I heard some, oh, they're gone now, but they brought up about animal care. Um, and I addressed this issue of animal care in two thousand and nineteen and concerned about the services that we were not getting from our current people that we had agreements with. And so we have since changed that agreement. But I just wanted them to know that we're working very hard, as she indicated, to build a new facility and also for the animals that are there now to do the best we can to serve them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, want to remind everyone that on Tuesday, February the sixth, will be the state of the county and everyone is invited. It will take place at Memorial Hall, Hamilton County Memorial Hall down and over the Rhine. Uh, there'll be a reception at five-thirty, followed by the state of the county. So want to, I'll continue to make those announcements so everyone um is aware of it. Uh, in addition, I do want to uh thank all those who put together Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. celebrations and um specifically being with those who have been with Dr. King. And um I want to thank Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church, where they honored the late Reverend Bennett Walker Smith, who was with Dr. King and was a major force uh in Hamilton County and uh shook it up uh because that was what you had to do. If you want to get change, you've got to shake things up. And so I was honored to receive, uh, be one of the recipients of that award along with Councilmember Durance uh out of, at Lincoln Heights, as well as Reverend H.L. Harvey uh Junior as well. Uh, so that was a, a wonderful, uh, to be out there with Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church. And then those who braved the cold for us to march uh in this march for Dr. King on uh Monday. It was really cold, but it was a great turnout. And also those who showed up at the MLK Breakfast at the Freedom Center with the National Director of My Brothers Keeper as the National Keynote Speaker for us. So want to um acknowledge that. Also, uh, this week I had a great meeting and I'm excited that the LAD Affordable Home Model uh is one that's going to be recommended through our money with CDF. We put forty million dollars in affordable housing and thirty-three million we put toward CDF to implement. And we've had a lot of ribbon cuttings where we have been stop-gap fillers. But this one would be one that we would be a leader on and I think a leader in the nation. LAD, this type of housing uh for those with disabilities. I don't feel we've done enough with people with disabilities because they're the number one minority group in the, in the country. And uh I got to see firsthand when my mother was in a wheelchair for twelve years, the difference from when she was walking and when she was in a wheelchair and how to get around. The house was very difficult. So to see LAD presenting these type of smart homes that are national models, I'm excited uh that uh we would, we will have a chance to be a part of it and something I've been supportive of since the time they have presented it to us, which I think is, is phenomenal. So I'm excited to hear more about that. Got a great chance to meet with them uh this week. Also, uh, I attended and was one of the speakers at the Cincinnati's Fourth National, Fourth Annual National Day of Racial Healing and uh was excited to be a part of the panel that was uh sponsored by All In Cincinnati, the Center for Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation, University of Cincinnati. And it was held at the Greater Cincinnati Foundation. Uh, so that was uh very exciting. And then I attended the ribbon cutting yesterday for the uh Healthcare Connection. They have a new pharmacy. And pharmacy is so important now. When you go to get your medicine, uh, you can't hardly find pharmacists. Uh, a lot of times, it's, it's the, the whole getting your medicine is a whole different situation. So I do believe in So I do believe in community pharmacy, and that way, you get to know your pharmacist, and they know your doctors, and all those kinds of things. And that's what happened at the Lincoln Heights Medical Center yesterday. They opened up a new community pharmacy. So very excited about that. Did a lot of other things, but we're gonna, I'm gonna hold on that. I do want to end, though, with something that is concerning to me. We heard from one of our speakers, Marilyn C. McQueen, a senior citizen, that says she's being potentially forced out of a home that she's paid her property taxes on, on time for years, but because the jump in the taxes, property taxes. I'm getting emails, I'm getting phone calls, and this is something that I've been very concerned about. That's why I was pushing for the 30% full tax rebate. People could use the rebate. Affordability for housing can't be just for the new affordable housing. We got to help people stay in the house they got right now, so we don't increase that problem. But I wanted to read, because a lot of the stuff that I, that I bring forward, I'm bringing forward, these ideas from the people, the community, and I bring them forward here to the platform. But I got a call, just to put faces and names, Sheila D. Johnson and William Johnson emailed me, says, hi, our house taxes went up a lot, with an explanation point. She went on to say, it's like they're trying to push us out of our home we've been in for 30 or more years. We are seniors with hardly no income. It's $3,000 from what was $800. This is sad. Where do we go? Another one, Ella Atkins on Beavis Avenue, went on to say, I'm a senior citizen who lives in Ebbingston, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 40 years. I'm a single retired woman, living on a fixed income, and a recent increase has tripled my tax payment, not to mention the increased mortgage payment that the increase has on my bill. My concern, I'm going to be taxed out of my home. My taxes have gone from $600 to $1,800. What am I to do? And then lastly, and these are just some, David Hale said, wants to talk about the issue of property taxes. And he went on to say, the new valuation for the house, which is much higher than it used to be. He went on to say, please note that the taxes are too high. So we have people, real people, who are crying out for help, and I'm asking Administrator, I don't want to throw my hands up and say, there's nothing we can do. We didn't do the 30%, which we should have done, to help give relief, but we do have over $100 million in the Children's Services Fund that's sitting there, and we're trying to create programs to use the money. And these dollars come only from those who own a home. If you don't own a home, it doesn't come from you. And I do want, I know we said we're going to look at it, but we can't sit there hoarding $100 million. I believe that we still can do new programs and help our youth, but at the same time, we can't just have it sitting there, waiting to create programs. So I'm not saying take all of it, but I want to see, is there something, a portion, that could be returned to the citizens? Because obviously, we didn't, when they voted for it, we didn't have the, usually when you vote for something, we already have the need that you have to, you know, it's already. But this time, we combined two levies, which gave us a surplus of over $100 million. I think last month, they said they had $170 million in there. So I do want to get a report on that, a report to all of us. And then lastly, AARP, I did some research, they have a program, I don't know if it would be able to be used here, but I've asked the Administrator to look at it, and I'll have it sent to all my, to both my colleagues as well. AARP has a program that they have been helping seniors with property taxes, and it's an interesting program where you can kind of volunteer with the county, and it's called Work Off Tax Levies. And you can do some volunteering. They have in other counties, they've got it in South Carolina, Dorchester County, they've got it in San Diego, I believe, San Antonio, Texas, some other places. I don't know if it's, can be done here, but I would like for somebody to reach out to AARP and look and see, can we do this? They could work off some of it. So in other words, we would pay you to do this work, some of the seniors that want to go back, do a little work, and then it would go toward paying off your taxes. But I also want to touch base with our treasurer and bring everybody in. But I, a citizen sent me this, and I think it's worth taking a look. Work Off Tax Levies, programs allow older residents to work off property taxes. And it's a program through AARP, and a lot of other counties around the country are doing it. So just wanted to submit that, to take a look at it. We might, we might, might not be able to, but I think we need to look at everything possible, as well as, I'd like to know how much ARPA money do we have left over from maybe programs that didn't spend it? I know we'll be having that conversation soon, but I'd like to have it sooner than later, if there's any way possible, we can do more to help citizens with their property taxes. I would ask us to take a look. So those are my comments, but we do have some by leaves and some people.
Can I make a comment?
Oh, yes, yes. Commissioner Dumas.
I just wanted to mention, as we talk about taxes, I'm one of those real people whose property went up and assessments went up, so I certainly can appreciate what the young lady, the young lady was saying back there. It certainly is unfortunate. I've received many emails as it relates to property assessments, and I've responded back to them that they need to know that the county had nothing to do with the upgrade, the increase, that we did our assessment as a county, and then the state decided if they were going to agree or not agree. So the state decided on this exorbitant amounts of increase. So just to let you know that, that doesn't help you, but what I would like to tell people that have an issue with what they receive, there is a board of revision where you can go and talk to them. It's a board with three or four people on it. We have representatives from the county, and you can let them know why you think this is ridiculous, and I can give you the information, have my chief of staff give you that, so you can talk to the people that are having you, that are enforcing this. And we need to look at, we all need to speak out, because it's just really way over our heads, especially as a senior, to be able to handle this increase. That's all I have. Oh, I wanted to say one other thing, please. The children's levy, I've heard before about taking some money out of the children's levy for the purpose of whatever we decide is a board, but if that resolution would ever come here, I would not be able to agree with that, because the children's levy is for the children's levy. Dr. Patton, our director, is working very hard to spend that money on things that are important. And the people that voted for the children's levy, how do we even find where they are so they can get a rebate on it? So I think we need to look at options. There are many options we can look at, but for me, children's levy is not one. That's all I have.
Thank you. As it relates to that children's levy, my, my recommendation would be the homeowners, they have, only the homeowners pay for on your property taxes. And I'm talking about a rebate for the homeowners. And when they passed it, we combined the levy, and we ended up with $100 million, over $100 million. And my position is, we can't hoard that money if we didn't need it. If we, if we had a program already, ready to go, we were ready to do $100 million, we ended up with more money than we had programming, although we're trying to come up with programs, and I'm not against that, but I think that there needs to be a rebate to those homeowners, because obviously, we took in more money than we actually needed. But I know that there will be a report on that. Mr. Ludo, we did put $5 million to help with mortgages and property taxes. Could you tell us how much money is left? People can still apply that need help?
Commissioner, we're checking on that. Last I checked, so I can't, it was several, it was almost a week ago, probably, I think it was close to $1 million, maybe $900,000, something like that, that was left in that fund, so we're talking about with JFS about ways that we, that we can promote the continued availability of that.
Okay. And people can go to 513relief.org and apply. So there is some money left, not the $5 million, but we got some money and some people can still apply for.
Okay. I, I.
Yes, Vice President.
Just two things related to what's been discussed. So the House bill that you were referring to, ma'am, was introduced by Donnie Isaacson from this area, and so it's happening at the state level. The one thing we can do, though, is to weigh in, in support of the bill. So maybe that's something, and I'll be happy to bring that to one of our future meetings, maybe next week, so that we can offer a letter of support for that legislation, because he's the one that run in that bill up at the State House, and I don't know how influential that will be with our colleagues at the State House, but I think it's the least we can do in support of what you're advocating for. And lastly, I didn't want to go without saying, the children's services levy increase was to help us be more proactive when it comes to children's services. The idea is to go into the homes before any child needs to be removed, to provide some stability to that family, so that the child maybe, if, you know, depending on what the condition is in the house, maybe can be safely at home. And so it was a very different approach for JFS. Moira Weir and Michael Patton and others were a part of that, but the idea for the funding was to do things a little differently at JFS. And so I would agree that it's taking a while to roll that out, but that is the idea behind those resources that are part of the children's services levy. So I didn't want to leave the impression that there was no plan. There was a plan, and the plan is still being implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. We have several by leaves for appointments. By Leave Number One is a resolution appointing a member to the Convention Facilities Authority, and the person is Mayor Lawrence Hawkins. I want to congratulate him out of Springdale. I would like to make a motion to adopt item by leave number one.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. By Leave Number Two is a resolution appointing members to the Southwestern Ohio Regional Transit Authority, Blake Etheridge, Neil Kelly, who's here, Brianna Moss, Trenton, oh, do we need to do the other ones? Okay. Trenton Emma Necker, Amanda Karleski, and Jay Beatty. I make a motion to adopt.
Second? Can I, can I ask, add something, though? So with these appointments, and as you say, Neil Kelly is in the room, Neil, thank you for being here. Thank you, and really, thank you to all these individuals who are willing to serve as volunteers on the numerous boards that we're appointing to. There are three here, though, that live outside Hamilton County, in Butler, Claremont, and Warren. They are non-voting members of Sorda. I want to especially thank them for being willing to do this. We're trying to create a nexus between ourselves and these outlying counties. They don't even get a vote on Sorda, and yet they're willing to serve. So I just want to do an extra shout-out to those individuals.
Okay. Now, did you second the motion?
I did.
Okay.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
I want to give his proper title, Councilman Neil Kelly Deer Park. Thank you for being here. By Leave Number Three is a resolution appointing a member to the Port Authority of Greater Cincinnati. And I'm going to open up, we've got something to comment before we, before I put my second on the motion.
No comment.
Comments, anybody? Commissioner Dumas?
No comment.
Okay. I make a motion to approve by Leave Three.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. By Leave Four is a resolution appointing a member to the Hamilton County Board of Zoning Appeals, Daniel Ransenberg. Any comments? I make a motion to approve by Leave Four.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Once again, thank you, everyone who is, who are volunteering to be on these boards and commissions, and you can go to our site, there's others available, and we just want to thank everybody who's stepping up to serve. Mr. Ludo?
Commissioners, no, you think, you hit all the by leaves today, Commissioner Reese, so I have no by leaves. Just a quick comment, did just want to thank or congratulate, we try whenever we can to recognize certain jobs and job classifications. One of those that we make an effort to ping on every so often is our 911 dispatchers. Want to congratulate Tim Harris. Tim, longtime dispatcher, leader up at the Communication Center, received the Dispatcher of the Year Award from the Hamilton County Police Association, given to someone who has a long time or, or a recent dedication to public, to public service and law enforcement. Tim has been with the Communication Center for a while, so well-deserving of that award, so just wanted to congratulate Tim for a job well done.
Congratulations. Mr. Engineer, going to the calendar.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
And I do have your answer. February 22nd is the next hearing on the sidewalks.
Awesome. Thank you.
And we just have one item today, which is a resolution to put the Anderson Ferry at Foley Road signal replacement project out for bid. This is project number 502404. It's located in Delhi Township. This is for a complete signal pole, signal heads, and controller replacements for that intersection. The engineer's estimate is $231,000, and this is coming out of the Road and Bridge Fund.
Any questions?
Mr. Beck, was this a rebid on here?
No, this is not.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item number one.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ludo?
The next several items on the agenda are planning and development items related to the Community Development Nonprofit Services Grant. I believe Maria Collins is back to walk us through these, and I know there's some awardees that are in the, in the audience today.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Ludo. So this is, these, there are seven of the subrecipient agreements for our nonprofit services grants that are on your agenda today, for your authorization for approval. The agencies have representatives that are here with us today, representing their organization, and I don't know if you want me to go down the list of each application, providing a little more information about the service and the award amount, or if you just want to kind of take them all, all seven together?
We'd like to take them all together, and I think we got a presentation on these.
Yes, 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 we do.
Okay. So just go through all of them.
Okay. So the agreements, and I apologize, I don't have the agenda in front of me right now, but the organization is legal aid. Thank you. The first organization is St. Vincent de Paul. The award is, the grant amount for award is $60,000. St. Vincent de Paul, St. Vincent de Paul, excuse me, they provide free pharmaceutical care. The second agreement is with Neighborhood Allies. The award amount is $40,000. They provide long-term supportive services for youth and seniors with mental issue, mental health issues. The next agreement is for legal aid. The award amount is $63,000. This is for their Clearing Hurdles and Employment and Kinship Care Program. The next agreement is for Legal Aid Society, again, for $67,000. This is for their Rental Assistance, Eviction Prevention, Foreclosure Prevention, Keeping Families Safe and Secure at Home Program. The next resolution, rather, is Community Matters. The grant award amount is $40,000. This is for their Education Forward Program. This is for their Education Forward Program. The next resolution is for Catholic Charities of Southwest Ohio. The grant award amount is $80,000, and this is for their, I'm sorry, the grant amount is $80,000, and the program is the Immigrant Legal Services Program. And the next resolution is for the YWCA of Greater Cincinnati. The award amount is $80,000. This is for Domestic Violence Shelter Services.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up for questions, and then we can hear from each of them. Do you have any general questions?
I don't.
Commissioner Dumas, any general questions?
Just in general, will these agencies have an opportunity later on during the year to apply again, or is this a one-time deal, because the amounts are so low?
Yes, they can apply annually. However, we do encourage the agencies to expend the funding that they receive within that program year before applying for the following year. We haven't really had an issue with that. Everyone, each agency that's been awarded in the past two years have been able to draw down all the funds within that program year.
I was thinking about legal aid specifically. I know they're so overstaffed, and can this money at all be used, it's just direct services? It can't be used for staffing or anything?
Yes.
It can.
It can, it can go and pay salaries.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. We have, do we have a representative here from St. Vincent de Paul Charitable Pharmacy?
Yes, we do.
I'm just going to, as I call you up, please come up and introduce yourself.
Just a moment, got to get the name. So the representative from St. Vincent de Paul?
He's right behind you. They can introduce themselves.
Sorry.
That's okay. Come on up and introduce yourself.
Dr. Rusty Carrington, Vice President of Pharmacy for St. Vincent de Paul Charitable Pharmacy.
And did you want to say anything about this?
Just thank you so much for, for what the county does for us. We give out free medications to people in need. Last year, about 80,000 prescriptions were given out to people who couldn't afford them otherwise, so we're so appreciative.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Neighborhood Allies.
Hello. My name is Noel Byer. I'm founder and president of Neighborhood Allies. So we do two things. The first is that we provide outreach to really try to help increase access to the services, systems, and resources. And once we're there, we provide, you know, immediate support to help connect people, whether it be by, through information, through assistance, completing the applications, through communicating with the, you know, agencies that have the help, getting all of the documents together, you know, and that's our resource navigation. And I will say that this funding is extremely helpful, because our other side of this is a community mental health service, so we provide case management and therapy. And that is, you know, it's, it's a Medicaid program, but the outreach and the resource navigation is just something that is not have other funding opportunities. So this has really helped, and we have connected with the city of Woodlawn, the Village of Woodlawn, so that we can help people in Zone 15, and you can come see us on Second Fridays at the Woodlawn Recreation Center from 11 to 2, where we will help people get connected.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I do have a question. So you're, the population you serve are people with mental health challenges, is that correct?
So we have two programs for a very strategic reason, and it's kind of, I like to say my joke is a hashtag, we help everybody. My goal is really just to help everybody, regardless of, you know, whether you have an ID or, you know, just, just whatever. So if you really just need information and connection to the resources, you know, we will, we'll help you just get the information, complete the application, connect with the agencies. And then for people that need longer-term support, have a whole pileup of problems, you know, that are just really dealing with some higher needs type things, then we refer them over to our mental health program, and then we can kind of continue to provide that care.
Thank you.
Next, we have Legal Aid.
You didn't address me. I wanted to just thank her for the work that you do. No questions. Thanks.
Next, we got Legal Aid Society of Greater Cincinnati.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Mary Asbury. I'm the Executive Director of the Legal Aid Society of Greater Cincinnati. We certainly appreciate the support for these two programs. I want to mention, in terms of constituent service on some of what you've been discussing today, the grant for keeping families safe and stable in their homes does cover representation of homeowners and to prevent foreclosure, but also to deal with these tax situations that, plus we have other funding to do that. We are working with LISC for, to try to raise money for home appraisals, because if people want to go to the Board of Revision, they really need an attorney. Legal Aid is putting on a full court press to reach out. These have to be done by March. I did give my card to the woman who spoke earlier, but I want you to know from constituent service standpoint, please send folks to us, and we'll see what can be done. However, for some of them, their valuations have gone up. I don't want to overpromise it, but I will say they need to get a lawyer, they need to have an appraisal, and there is funding, not only that you all referred to, but right now Community Action Agency has some recent additional funding that should be available over these next couple of months to help with tax arrear, foreclosure prevention, and we are making it a big priority. So I want you to know that, and that we stand very ready to help you on constituent service. And then our other program, Clearing Barriers to Employment, focuses on reentry. Commissioner Dumas, you might have hired some people without knowing it, because part of what we're doing is having expungements and sealing of criminal records, so that people can apply for job without having to say that they have that record. So some of this is under the radar screen of who might be reentry. And then the other is kinship, and those are the family members who are stepping up to take in children whose parents are unable, and that you are helping support our work on behalf of those families, so that they can get custody orders and the financial help they need to support those kids. So I think a lot of what we're doing with you all and with your support is very much on your agenda today, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere.
Thought I might escape.
First of all, just thank you, all the work that Legal Aid does. Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it. You brought up a good point. Somebody's watching, they say, don't go down to Board of Revisions without a lawyer. I mean, this is not an easy situation. So they, you need a lawyer or legal aid that has lawyers to go with you.
If possible, and, and an appraisal, which costs about $400. We do have some funds, we're trying to raise some funds, working with LISC, as well as, we'll see if there's others in the community and the philanthropic who may be willing to help with some of these out-of-pocket costs, because without an appraisal, you also don't have a lot of talking points on why your tax bill isn't correct. And we certainly support the efforts on behalf of tax relief for senior homeowners, but, but those haven't come through, as has been mentioned.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Drehouse.
Just, as usual, Legal Aid is in the same lane we're in, as a partner. So you've always mirrored the priorities of the county. I don't, I know it's not intentional, but it's, it always ends up this way, right? So appreciate the work that you do, and I hope I, my, my staff is in the back of the room listening to how to maybe navigate some of the constituent concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Yes, I wanted to thank you also, because your work, Legal Aid's work at the eviction court is invaluable. I've heard how you guys have advocated and fought for those that are being put out of their homes, so thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're, we're keeping that in the front burner as well, and I do want to mention a name. Stephanie Mose is the managing attorney for our homeowner and consumer group, and it's fine, you can send people directly to me, but if you send them to Stephanie, it'll be even faster.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Community Matters, Cincinnati, Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mary Delaney. I'm the Executive Director of Community Matters, and we really appreciate your support. This is our first time engaging with county funds to support our programming, so we're very excited to take this journey and be able to serve more folks. The Education Forward Program is an adult education program to help folks reengage with learning. For the most part, most of our folks want to earn a high school equivalency. And so each year, we work with around 300 individuals to support that effort. Right now, yesterday, we just got our 32nd graduate who earned their GED. So a lot of folks get a GED, some folks, we have other ways to help them recover credits and get their high school diploma directly. And so this program is a huge barrier removal for folks that want to go forward with wherever they're headed, with their career, jobs, or just, or a lot of folks just want to gain that knowledge base. So we really appreciate your support.
Thank you. Vice President Drehouse?
So welcome to the fold.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Yes, is this a new program?
No, we have been doing this work since 1970s.
Seventy, okay. Thank you. You've been under the radar?
We, yeah, we're very much under the radar. We're coming out.
That's all I have, yeah, okay.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Catholic Charities of Southwest Ohio.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Clapp. I'm the Immigration and Legal Services Director at Catholic Charities. This is also our first time applying for county funding, so thank you very much for the support. Last year, we were able to serve almost 600 individuals in their immigration legal matters, so we're grateful to be able to continue to grow our program and help vulnerable refugees and immigrants in the county. So thank you very much.
Open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you for what you're doing. You're partnering also with the county in other ways to make sure that immigrants feel welcome and have the supports they need when they get here, so thank you for that. Maria, I just want to warn you that I'm going to ask how many of these are new, because we've just heard two, and I, I don't know if the Neighborhood Allies was new too, so not a question for you, but two.
Sure.
When she, I just want to warn her so that she's ready for the question when she comes back up. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. And then the last one is YWCA of Greater Cincinnati.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for your continued support for YWCA Emergency Shelter. As you all know, it is a great need in our community. We serve survivors of domestic violence. In 2023, we served about 441 individuals. About 70% of those survivors were able to exit into positive housing, so we greatly appreciate your support. The $80,000 that we're asking for will provide that 24-hour service, 24-hour service for our individuals in the shelter. I also want to thank our staff for coming to support. We have our Director of the Residential Services, we have our Assistant Director, Tiffany Wilson, then we have Nicole Williams, and then we have our CEO, so thank you all. Some of the services that we provide is safety planning, intensive case management services, and also programming for children. As you all know, we definitely need those services, so thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate what you do. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. We certainly need more, but I thank you so much for what you guys are doing, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. You had another question for Maria?
Yeah, so.
Maria?
So, so often, you hear from the board, we love our partners, but are there new partners that we can welcome, as you say? And so how many of these are new entities to the county?
Actually, four of the agencies are new to the county. Of the seven that are listed here, and I do want to mention, of that seven, Legal Aid actually has two programs that are being funded, so, yeah, so just want to make sure that we count that correctly. So more than half of the award this year, or grants this year, are going to newly funded agencies by Hamilton County through this program.
Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioner Dumas? I don't have any. Okay. All right. Well, I make a motion to approve items two through eight.
Second? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next Thursday. Bye-bye.
All right. To the consent agenda. Mr. Ludo?
Commissioners, I'll walk through the consent agenda fairly quickly here, so item number nine is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Contract with Cincinnati Animal Care for Animal Services at 1.25 billion. This is consistent with what was budgeted for 2024. Item number 10 is bid awards and contracts executed by the Purchasing Department for December of '23 at $317,446. Item number 11 is a resolution accepting purchase orders and authorizing their execution and release at $5.5 million. There is item number 12, which is a resolution related to foster care services between the Board and, between JFS and Buckeye Ranch as the provider. We have items 13 and 14, which are both credit card usage in juvenile court, and we have item 15, which is the monthly investment report for December '23 from the County Treasurer. And that is your consent agenda for this week, Commissioners.
Okay. Open it up, Vice President Drehouse?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
I make a motion to approve items nine through 15.
Second? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Okay. I make a motion for us to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 12122G2 to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?